Say good afternoon. I'll try this again. Good evening, everyone. Need something. I'd like to call together the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission. The hour is 5:33. This is Monday, October the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We do have quorum, and I will ask that we be led in prayer by Commissioner Jay Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to propose that we do a moment of silence tonight in recognition of recent things that have happened in our city, our state, in our country, and in the world. So if you would, please, moment of silence, and you think about the things that are relevant and important to you at this time. And as you have thought about those things, I would continue the prayer by asking that we be guided by faith and that the things that we do tonight will be pleasing in his sight. Amen.
Amen. I'm going to ask Commissioner Terry to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Mr. Mayor, Terry wants a peon, key to the city.
I'll let you give it to her. You've had the agenda before you since Friday, if there's no other...
I have a request.
Yes, sir.
Asking the fellow commissioners if we could move second reading of ordinance nineteen thirty-nine in front of the second reading of ordinance nineteen thirty-eight. The first one... Yeah, the first one is... The one I want to move is the one that is creating a new Parks and Rec Department. I think we might have some discussion there, and I hate to repeal the other one till we have that discussion.
Commission, do you have input on that? Meet your approval?
Yes.
Okay. Remind me when we get there, Rick, if you would. Item one is the... I'm sorry, back up. Here the public. We have a... Public's opportunity to address any item that is on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity later on to address any item that is not on tonight's agenda. So do we have anyone who wants to speak on any agenda item at this time?
You want to remind folks about coming forward and recognizing themselves and speak three minutes or less on the topic that's on the agenda?
Thank you, sir. I don't think we have any takers, so we'll move right to item one, which is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, that being September twenty-third, October second, and October the second. Chair will accept the motion in a second at your convenience.
I'll move for approval of minutes for the previous meetings of nine twenty-three, ten-two, and ten-two.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. This is the second. Commissioner Cottle. Third, Commissioner Atkins. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item two. If I could get Ms. Trolinger and Jamie, is she here? And is...
Ms. Trolinger?
There she is. Do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Jamie Payton, Assistant Director of Forest Forestry. Andrea Lewis, Outreach Advocate for Boyle County for Greenhouse Seventeen.
Mary Trolinger, donor... What is my title? Development Specialist at Greenhouse Seventeen.
Excellent. This is a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, two thousand and nineteen. Whereas domestic violence in America is intolerable, unacceptable, must be stopped, and deserves considerable public attention; and whereas children who witness domestic violence often grow up believing that physical cruelty in relationships is acceptable behavior, and thus they tend to perpetuate a cycle of violence in society; and whereas many federal, state, and local programs addressing the domestic violence problem have achieved success in bringing greater safety to families; and whereas community leaders, police, judges, advocates, health care workers, and concerned Americans are working together across America to develop solutions to this serious problem and to implement services that will improve our responses when it occurs; and whereas programs designed to educate men and women about ways that can help prevent domestic violence are being developed across our nation; and whereas numerous law enforcement officials and departments have created specialized domestic violence units that cooperate with community advocates to enhance services for victims, and representatives from the faith community frequently provide essential support in areas where there may be no other services available; and whereas anyone can be a victim of domestic violence, regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion; and whereas we must continue to hold domestic abusers accountable, punish them to the full extent of the law, and prevent them from inflicting more abuse, now therefore be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the City of Danville, on this fourteenth day of October, two thousand and nineteen, recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to participate in events supporting the effort. You want to close in?
Sorry.
Where are you going? Uh-uh. Come right on in here. There we go. You're welcome. Thank you.
Any of you ladies have anything to say? You want to speak?
Thank you for having us here. Thank you for being so supportive of us and this community. We are privileged to be here and serve survivors of Boyle County and our other sixteen county area through the seventeen. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion to approve the proclamation on Domestic Violence Awareness Month for two thousand and nineteen as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item three is the Ethics Board appointment and reappointment, and I would like to recommend that Liz Erwin and Buck Rogers be reappointed to the Ethics Board. And I will... Mr. Erwin's term... Excuse me. Ms. Erwin's term will expire October thirty-one of twenty-two, and Mr. Rogers' term will expire October thirty-one of twenty.
I move for approval of the mayor's recommendation for the reappointments to the Ethics Board.
Second. Commissioner Cottle. Second by Commissioner Terry. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Okay, Commissioner Sears, you wanted to do item six...
Code enforcement.
Oh, sorry. I skipped you.
How dare me. How dare you? Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. You have it for you, the codes enforcement report for the month of September. As you can see, for the month, we had eighty-six violations and inspections, and we had twenty-four business licenses issued. We issued seventy-nine parking citations. This month, we almost broke even. We placed seven liens, and we recovered seven liens. They're about $200 difference, so we almost broke even on those. Along with several of you, I attended four days of training at the League of Cities, so that was very helpful, and we learned a lot. And on the condemned properties, we added two condemned properties to the list this month. Three fifteen Baughman started coming down today, so they'll be finishing up this week and getting everything cleaned up. Demolition of six sixty Old Scheckertown Road has been given approval, so we're waiting on quotes for demolition, but that one will be coming down. And nine forty Westwood Court was added to the condemned properties, and that one... There was a lot of things going on at that property, but we're in the process of working on getting that taken care of, going from there. I'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
I'd like to point out, once again, I do this every time, but I think that the activity that your department is doing, again, is successful. If you look at the top ten, most of the comments are in renovation, being maintained, and then when you get into the next eleven through fifteen, it's usually something that's a little bit out of your control, a person in a nursing home or so forth, but I think we're being successful in that thing.
I think so, too. And you can see from the call logs, the numerous variety of calls we're getting.
Also, just as an education, we have a pretty good-sized public here. You had seven illegal signs removed. You want to talk about illegal signs? What are they?
I'm not... I would say those were probably in the right-of-way signs along that route. Planning and zoning does a lot of the signage removal for the enforcement of the sign ordinance, but I'd say that's... They were in the right-of-way.
Now we'll do item six ahead of item five. This will be the second reading of ordinance number nineteen thirty-nine.
For the sake of discussion, I move that we move on the second reading of ordinance number nineteen thirty-nine.
So, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you like to read the motion, and then we can discuss as necessary?
This is the second reading of ordinance number nineteen thirty-nine, an ordinance creating a city committee for parks and recreation and creating the Office of Parks and Recreation Director, so as to replace the repealed Joint City-County Recreation Board in Chapter Ten, Parks and Recreation, Article Two, City-County Recreation Board of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Danville, Kentucky.
Mr. Dexter, you want to comment, or would you prefer to wait till the next one?
I'm happy to do whatever is your pleasure.
Do you have a second?
Well, Commissioners, I'll go.
I think we got a second.
So, we're in the second reading. We're faced with moving forward, which I think that isn't a bad decision. We're also faced with declining it and giving it some more time, which would really be just tabling it. So, face that, I had some concerns. I had some concerns at the first reading. I'd like to air those, and maybe we'd have a conversation about that. I think in the ordinance... But I did talk to Attorney Dexter today that there was some word changes in there or clarifications that could be made. He clarified some of them. I still think that maybe we should take a look at that. I also feel that since this is a new department for the city, should it go forward, that we probably should go forward with having a job description, which I know that the city manager said there was one when we recruited John Bell. But I feel like it should be part of this document in some regard, so that this department and that position field knows what their duties are. And also, and this is kind of minor, and I did talk to Attorney Dexter about this, some assurances of staffing, and I think that's kind of assumed, so... But I'm going to go ahead since I wrote it down and make it. The other thing is, is there's been some productive talks with some of the magistrates at fiscal court, and we do want to work together. We want to move forward. We want to fund Parks and Rec well. Parks and Rec is not broken. Parks and Rec can just be better, and I think financially, they need that money. So, I'd like to see, before we move to this, a framework on the service agreement with the county, so that we know where we're going with this. There was a couple options that our Parks and Rec director put together from previous experience that was received pretty well with a couple magistrates, and Kevin and I had a chance to talk with him, and I felt pretty encouraged, and that's the reason that I'm bringing this up. I would be inclined to table this and give it a couple weeks to hammer out a few things.
I'd be happy to address those, and actually would like to, Commissioner, if now would be appropriate, or if you want to take further comments amongst yourselves.
Give us the call.
As far...
You're fine.
Okay. I'm going to address them in the same order in which you brought them up, Commissioner, and that is, first of all, the job description. The job description of any city office or officer is never a part of a creation ordinance. This is a matter of form in our ordinance book. So, the ordinance before you mimics the creation of any office in the city. So, therefore, it is not our custom or design to include job descriptions in the creation of city offices or departments. That is in a different manual, and so it should not be a part of this creation document. So, that answers that question. We have a job description. No job description for police chief, fire chief, HR director, codes director, city engineer, city manager, for instance, is even in the job... In the creation ordinance. So, therefore, it would be inappropriate, and I would say improper, as to form, to include one in this ordinance. So, that is a... While it may be a valid concern, the document before you, it would be improper for it to be present in. So, for the sake of uniformity of all city offices, this is not the document for it. As far as your staffing concern and the creation of the development, again, this is a question of form and uniformity amongst the creation of all offices. No creation document or ordinance talks about what staff will be there. However, to alleviate concerns of the current director, we added in the whereas paragraph, where the city desires... Or, excuse me, deems it necessary and appropriate to amend the current ordinance, quote, "to create a city department with staff entirely devoted to Parks and Recreation." So, it is a part in the enabling language, which was done in an effort to provide assurances to those currently working in Parks and Recreation, that this is not simply the creation of a director without staff, but in an entire department, frankly. So, that language was added in the enabling whereas paragraphs to provide those reassurances, plus reassurance has been provided by the city manager to the current director and to this commission. As far as options with the fiscal court and potential service agreements and things of that nature, I will only say this. There are a lot of moving parts in the negotiation of substance of this magnitude, and when you have a lot of moving parts, it's critical that you drop an anchor at some point and build a foundation. Until you drop anchor, build a foundation, you cannot articulate clearly and efficiently the fine points in any negotiation. Two weeks ago, you made a decision that you thought it was the best course of action for the efficient delivery of Parks and Recreation services to be enabled through the administration of a city department. If nothing has changed in those two weeks, I would advocate that you not table the matter before you, but you actually vote on it, because what it will allow is precisely what you want, and that's the creation of a service agreement that creates these potential options that have been discussed of late. Without action tonight on this matter, the foundation is on sifting sand. I would say there is no foundation, and without it, you're making the creation of a service document virtually impossible on the part of staff. Until you have the foundation of what it's going to look like from an administrative standpoint, we can't create a service document. All we can create are potential hypotheticals, and I will say, from experience, that is both an exercise in complexity, time, and much of the time futility. In order for us to provide a service agreement that will actually be of benefit to the negotiation table between the city and the county as a valued partnership, you have to take this action tonight. Tableing it does nothing but delay our work on the project.
Mr. Cottle, you attended that meeting. Can you share some thoughts with us, please?
I would be happy to. And I appreciate what Mr. Dexter's saying, and he's mentioned that to me before. I thought the ad hoc meeting was... It was cordial. Everybody had the same goal in mind, and Mr. Bell did come up with some options based on discussions that had been had. And option one actually keeps... It revisits the joint Parks and Recreation Agreement. And to me, I don't know, Mr. Dexter, if that's the case, would we still need this ordinance which repeals that organization or that board?
My answer to that question is yes, you would, because we said even during the current circumstances, the current ordinance is not effective. So, you would still need the repeal and the creation of a new ordinance. And I want to also remind you that the effective date of these ordinances are not till the end of the year, in the beginning of January. What this allows is the city to continue to make progress on a city department to provide for effective delivery of Parks and Recreation services the next calendar year, and still you can continue negotiations. And if the situation changes and the court actually affirmatively votes, not an ad hoc committee recommendation, but there's an effective vote by the fiscal court to fund what you're referring to as the joint option that is a partnership for all parks in the city and the county, they are free to do so, and at which time, the city can reconsider what it has done. I would just caution you from continuing to wait. We outlined last time in a white paper nearly five years of negotiation on this subject. And I think until you continue to move the ball and progress the line of scrimmage, then no action can be taken and effective. You have to proceed and allow other negotiations to continue, and should something transpire, you have a far-out effective date where you still can negotiate that end. However, in the event that they are unfruitful negotiations, you are left in entirely the same position down the road as we are now, potentially worse, and you're going to have a different mix of leadership in play, and the department is in flux. So, I say you're doing a disservice to not only the department, but to the negotiations by tabling the matter before you and not moving the line of scrimmage.
What if we made the effective date July one, two thousand and twenty, to line up with the fiscal year?
You could do that.
That way, we have essentially eight months to cover all the details, and we're not switching gears mid-budget because we operate on a fiscal budget and not a calendar budget, as well as Parks and Rec.
I would only say this, that we can alter the effective date of the ordinance down the road if we're not able to finalize negotiations prior to the end of the year. I think when you have momentum on this issue, that it is important to proceed in the manner that's efficient, and while we have current leadership in place for that to occur. And we're getting ready to go have a transition of leadership in the city that is just, quite frankly, before us. And it's... In the event that the work of the city is not able to transpire timely between now and the end of the year, you can look at a delayed effective date. However, staff thinks it's something that can be accomplished between now and the end of the year, even from a budgetary standpoint.
If I might also add just a comment. In order to plan for the new fiscal year and the expenses associated with that, it's important to begin before July one, and January one is the optimal time, really, to begin on the service agreement and to determine revenue and cost for service delivery that continue really increasingly in the spring through summer. And if we delayed everything until July one, I think it would be disadvantageous to our community.
I didn't see it like that at all. I thought it's giving us more time to negotiate and going into the next budget cycle...
The negotiation simply at this time is funding. It's how much money do you want to participate in Parks and Recreation? That's the funding agreement, and the delivery of services needs to be hammered out at the city level, and I say the time to do that is ripe. Why would you delay, and potentially during summer programming, that... I mean, any time there's going to be a transition, there's going to... It's going to add some amount of work to staff, but what I'm saying is the time is available and is appropriate. It aligns more with the budget cycle to do it now than in July, for the reasons stated by the city manager, and we're really talking about a level of funding. As the way I understand it, the funds that have been committed for Parks and Recreation, I believe those last appropriations are made by the city and the county either at the end of this year or at the very beginning of two thousand and twenty. So, if that's the case, the last payments will be made. The budget of Parks and Recreation should be full for the remainder of this fiscal year anyway.
I guess I'm over here squirming in my seat, because I guess we need to just somehow get the real question out tonight. I think the question is this. The staff is saying to us, the only way to go forward with Parks and Rec is to go forward alone.
No, no. Excuse me, if I can correct that. That's not entirely accurate. Staff is recommending that there be a creation of a city department to administer it jointly with county participation through a service agreement. That's quite different from the way you phrased it. The city staff has never advocated going alone.
Let me attempt to rephrase it, then. The decision is, if we create a city department, we give the county, then, the court, the option to decide a level of funding. If we go back to where we have a truly, quote-unquote, "joint Parks and Rec," and we're still in the ballgame together, not much has changed, except we try to allow the court to decide its level playing field with us. I just think that if we create a city department, the message I would receive if I set up in the court is that these... We're not willing to play the other anymore. Somebody's, you know... I don't... I don't know. Just, I'm of the opinion right now that we have sent a message two weeks ago to the county, that we're really willing to move forward with this stuff, and we've only given them two weeks. And I'm of the opinion that I'm willing to give them more time to decide what they really want to do. And I think that's what the subcommittee has asked us for, is for more time to continue working through some of these procedures and processes.
I'd like to hear the rest of the options that were discussed.
If I may just reply to Commissioner Atkins, staff is not taking off the table the desire to continue negotiation with the county, but what we're talking about is a funding level, and that's what we've always negotiated with annually, a funding level. What we also have talked about, so that doesn't change, and that won't change after a second reading of tonight's ordinance. However, what it ignores is that there are more acres of city parks outside of Millennium Park than there are there. So, we have a quasi-city department anyway on Parks and Recreation. We steal from other staff's time to make them manage, operate, and take care of existing parks outside of Millennium Park. So, where the... So whether you like it or not, the facts dictate that staff has to reorganize internally to take care of parks outside of Millennium. And there are substantial dollars you already allocate to do that outside of your Parks and Recreation budget. So therefore, I'm saying what this ordinance does is simply aligns what you currently do in a legal mechanism for you to do it more efficiently. But it's, I'd probably take offense to the comment, I think it's a gross mischaracterization of taking the ball and playing alone. We don't feel that way about solid waste. We don't feel that way about EMS. We don't feel that way about emergency management. And that is precisely the same format that what is before you. Do you feel like the county is taking the ball away from the city on emergency management? I don't think so.
No.
Do you feel that way about solid waste? I don't think so.
No.
And likewise to our, for the other services that we share in that manner. I mean, this is the same format that we've employed in other mechanisms. So I, this is not a creative rewrite. It's simply a regurgitation of a successful format.
The conversation that Kevin and I had with a couple of magistrates were actually in favor of a city-run department. With a level of funding that's equal to what they're funding now, they just wanted to be assured that they knew where the funding was going, as presented by the Parks and Rec director. My opinion is give them that opportunity to talk about it. And if the majority of the magistrates don't go that way, then I'm in a different position.
Let me also add with regard to certainty of funding. Very few things are certain in life, and particularly the funding of any department or joint department with city and county, given our days of increased pension contributions and all else, plus the legal requirements that the city cannot commit to funding except annually. So for the department of Parks and Recreation to seek confirmation that they'll have a 10-year lifespan of a certain level of funding is simply not appropriate under the law, nor in tune with the realistic way in which all our other departments operate. Now, the funding of any department, city or county, is subject to the availability of funds and the other demands placed upon the decision-makers annually. And so I think it's just not realistic to think that anyone can give funding assurance to any department of the city or county into the future beyond one year.
And also, one more thing to that point. It's my understanding that this ad hoc committee of the court was prepared to, were in favor of two potential solutions, both of which involved the administration of Parks and Recreation through a city department. And if in fact that is the case, then what you're doing is only moving that conversation forward. And it's narrowing the conversation to say we've checked off one critical piece and then allows the fine tuning of whatever agreement they come to to take place. However, until we check that off, we are simply a rudderless ship. In essence, by voting tonight on a second reading, you are making an advancement to improve the conversation and finalize negotiation, precisely what the ad hoc committee wants from the court, allegedly. Now, that's from the court's committee, not the court as a whole. But if that in fact is the case, what you're doing is allowing a more efficient and effective conversation and negotiation, frankly, to transpire. But until you take this step, that won't happen.
Kevin's welcome to weigh in, but I think that those two magistrates want the opportunity to talk to their other magistrates, dissolve it, and come up with a positive solution for Parks and Rec. I don't feel like we need to rush into it. We'll be meeting in two weeks. They'll be meeting in between us. And then if, like I said, if it doesn't go that way, I'm still feeling good about the city running a good department. We do have more money budget than them. We have more land than they do. I think it'd be beneficial for the staff at Parks and Rec, and we do well, but I don't want to disenfranchise our neighbors.
I would agree with that. Somebody mentioned momentum. I think we have some momentum in the fact that we're, we had a good conversation. I think, like I said, everybody wants to come up with a good solution because, it's like anything else, you're stronger together. It's, in my opinion. And we've waited five years. I'll go along with that, but we can wait a little longer to get the right thing done.
Who were the two folks, or however many from the county, that you all met with?
Who were they? Jason and Jamie.
Okay.
And John Bell was there as well.
That meeting was initiated by them, so there's certainly an interest there to work together.
I ask this only for clarification purposes. While the magistrates want an opportunity to discuss that with the court, in what manner are they going to propose a solution? Who's writing a service agreement? Who's fine tuning the agreement of the X's and O's of what's going to transpire? My point is, this will, what you're advocating, we can't assist until you do what's before you. An action on this item allows us to proceed with the development of something that they can actually discuss. Until then, it's pie in the sky. So I understand, and staff again does not think we are stronger alone. I think there's a mischaracterization of what is before you. And that is, you voted two weeks ago to say the most effective delivery of an efficient, responsible Parks and Recreation system is through a single government-administered department. The county, while that was an option for them to do before, they did not do it. It's a recommendation of the master plan. You did it. What has changed in two weeks? And that if you proceed tonight, it allows the development of precisely what you're asking for. A delay in this only delays fruitful discussion of a service agreement. We can't prepare anything. They can't have fruitful discussion of it because it simply is, there's nothing tangible there to discuss. So while you're seeing action as a detriment to a relationship, staff sees it as an entirely positive momentum forward, which allows the partnership to flourish. So I want us to be cautious in characterizing what we're doing as a negative matter, city versus county. It's not that at all. It's precisely the opposite. It's creating a foundation that allows a compromise to be achieved.
You're trying to create a service agreement, something that should have been done at the inception. And had a service agreement been done, we probably wouldn't have had all of the, some of the miscommunication, et cetera. If you put it in a service agreement, it's pretty obvious and pretty clear what the obligations are. I mean, I don't know how, if the shoe were on the other foot, I'd want the same thing. I would want, I would want to see a service agreement from the county that says this is what they're going to do for our dollars.
Right. And how, and just precisely as we did with 911. And I think you also need to remember your roles as commissioners here tonight. You are here to serve the interest of the residents of the city of Danville. That doesn't mean you should not be a partner with those counterparts in the county because we're in one community. However, you are elected to serve what is in the best interest of the residents of the city of Danville, which is precisely what you did in your 911 center negotiations. The county wanted to go a different direction. The city did what it felt was best. The county felt it did what it was best, and we proceeded. And then the county changed course and came back to the city's department. That's fine. But each government needs to represent and advocate for what's in the best interest of its citizenry. Now, we share commonalities, and we are partners, and that's what the city desires. But ultimately, you have to decide from a tax perspective and the use of the funds that are benefited to you as elected officials, what is the most effective use of those dollars for the residents of the city of Danville.
I think the discussion, the conversation, I don't know how the public receives it, has been good. I'm ready to call for the question because we got a lot of folks sitting here waiting to talk to us. So I'd like to call for the question on the motion that's on the floor presently.
Question has been called. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Atkins.
A vote yes is vote in favor of moving us forward to establish this City Parks and Rec Committee and City and Parks Board. So I vote yes to push the envelope.
Commissioner Terry.
My vote also is yes in order to move forward with a possible service agreement.
Mayor Paris.
My vote is yes for clarity.
Commissioner Cottle.
My vote is no.
Commissioner Saris.
My vote is no as well, asking for time, but we're not going to get it.
Well, I think we still have plenty of time. There's no reason discussion to stop.
No, no, I agree. And hopefully, we'll pick that discussion up. Anyway, I guess we'll move on to number five.
Which is ordinance number 1938. Do I hear a motion for the second reading of that?
I'll move for the second reading of ordinance number 1938.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance?
This is the second reading of ordinance number 1938, an ordinance repealing in its entirety the City of Danville, Kentucky Code of Ordinances, creating a Joint City-County Recreation Board in Chapter 10, Parks and Recreation, Article 2, City-County Recreation Board, in order to replace it with an ordinance creating a city department for Parks and Recreation.
Call for the question.
Question's been called. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
No.
Commissioner Saris.
No.
Commissioner Atkins.
No.
Well, you can't say it's not entertaining.
Before you move on, Mayor, I will say this, that however things went today, I'd already had it in my mind that I will put a lot of energy into Parks and Rec. I would have done that two weeks from now. I'll still do it now. So I want the Parks and Rec Board and those employees to know that they have my full support, and we're looking forward to good things.
I think we all feel that way. I think there's a lot of good conversation to take place.
Yeah.
And has taken place.
Yeah.
And I want to commend you two and the counterparts on the court for productive conversation. I hope you'll continue down that path.
Yes. Do you all have another meeting scheduled?
Not yet.
Okay. Please do.
Item seven will be the first reading of ordinance number 1940. This is in regard to codification. Do I hear a motion for the first reading?
I move for approval of first reading of ordinance 1940.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Saris. Discussion?
Zero. We've done this before, but is there a cost associated with this? Who's answering that?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
It's sent to the American Publishing, Legal Publishing Corporation. They take all the ordinances and codify them into our code book annually.
So we do this every year?
Yes, sir.
Does she need to read that?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 1940, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Danville, Kentucky.
Someone want to call a question?
I'll call for the question.
Madam Clerk.
Mayor Paris.
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Saris.
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry.
Yes.
And now, item eight is the city manager report. Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. Tonight, briefly, I have two items to report. The first item is to advise the commission and the community that recently I received a letter from the pastor of the Presbyterian Church of Danville requesting that the city accept their decision to move the statue of Confederate Captain Robert E. Logan from church property to be located in proximity to the Confederate section of Bellevue, where actually Captain Logan is buried. This letter is somewhat lengthy, and I'll just touch on a couple of points in the letter. It notes that expenses associated with the proposed move of that statue will be borne by the congregation of the Presbyterian Church, and that no city taxpayer dollars would be involved in that move. They are requesting by this letter, the city approve at some point in time their request to move the statue to the new location in Bellevue because they believe it is more fitting for the statue. It will give it a greater ability to be safe from potential vandalism. And it also would remove what they consider as an impediment to their work with all members of our community because of the historical context in which that particular statue was erected. They note that the church has consulted with a variety of local historians, preservationists, and experts as they relate to war memorials. And while perhaps all of those prefer it to remain in the current location, all of them agree that Bellevue Cemetery would be the best and most historically appropriate alternative. They have received the support for this proposed move from the local chapter of the NAACP, and they suggest respectfully that the relocation is the best choice for our community. They're working on finalizing cost details and scheduled to move, assuming approval of the city, to grant authority for their purchase of an appropriate site, which staff has identified with the church as being at a location in proximity to the Confederate section of Bellevue Cemetery. It would be necessary for the city commission to both approve, in this case, I think, the sale of that lot or lots for the erection of that statue to the church. And we'd also need to develop a memorandum of understanding or agreement covering all elements of the move and liability issues associated with that, which our city attorney would be producing for your future decision. But I just wanted to report that I recently received this letter. I provided you with a copy of that, and those are the high points of that request.
Has the cemetery committee been included in this?
There were discussions, yes. In earlier weeks or even months in terms of that, our engineering staff has met with them and talked with regard to site or sites. So there have been conversations. I don't know that the cemetery committee has taken a formal position on the request to relocate it, but I can say that the chair, and I have talked, and she is of the opinion that the site selected is the best site within the cemetery, although there are issues, practically speaking, of how to move a very heavy statue in the cemetery without creating damage. But that's a, but in principle, I would say the chair, and as far as I know, the committee itself is in agreement, yes.
I'm not 100% positive that the city needs to firmly approve or disprove of the relocation of anything or be involved in this matter more than just the selling of a lot. It seems to me if someone purchases a lot and they can place a monument there, if it's within the policies and procedures that are existing in place, that no further action of this commission or staff would be necessary. We can delve into that further, but the city doesn't own that statue. So we, the city's blessing or approval or disapproval, I would say, is irrelevant.
But there are certain liability issues for both the statue and potential damage for transporting that would be probably better clarified by an agreement.
I don't doubt that, but in the event... I don't doubt that, but in the event that a normal, see, any citizen wanted to erect something in the cemetery, let's say Kevin Cottle's family's going to put an obelisk there, just preemptively for him, and they carried it in and they caused damage, there would be liability, wouldn't there? I don't know that we would have an agreement in a situation. What I'm saying is, I don't know that the city should participate to elevate the, I don't know that the city has a dog in this fight in the relocation of this monument. City doesn't own it. It's not the city's. City owns a cemetery. If you sell a lot and you want to place a monument, and you can do so without damaging other monuments or the grounds or disturbing other graves, if we need to create an agreement that has them certify that, consistent with city policy, then so be it. Otherwise, I would caution against a commission even getting involved in a matter of this level.
That's why I wanted, I wanted to know what the cemetery committee might have to say, even though they are advising-
I would caution their involvement. Any, you know, the city does not, in the cemetery, we don't regulate what type of monuments are placed on graves, do we? I mean, there might be certain type of restrictions that have to be in place, but I would be careful. It could, because it starts to look like the regulation of speech. And if you're going to be discerning or deciding what someone can and cannot put either on a gravestone, on a lot on which they purchased from the city.
Well, again, this letter was addressed to the city manager and presumably for administrative decision-making, although in the body of the letter, they did ask approval of the city commission in this endeavor. Based upon legal counsel's clarification and future opinion, we could proceed without the city commission speaking on the issue, if that's the course of action recommended.
I'm just saying, I think, let's continue to vet it, but at this point, I don't know if it rises to the level of the board of commissioners being involved.
My concern is damage to the roadway, damage to the entrance, and if none of that occurs, that's great. You also have an 18-ton piece of stone. You can't just sit that there because once you do that, that becomes our obligation. And so, I think an appropriate foundation should be part of the requirement so that it doesn't become a cost to the taxpayer later on.
Or a liability.
When statues in Lexington were relocated in the cemetery, I would like to, sometime to look and see how City of Lexington handled that situation, just as a, maybe a best-practice model. I don't know how they handled it. I just remember about here and now, so that's something we can look at.
I think you got our message.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Second item, very briefly, I want to give an update on the recruitment effort to identify final candidates for city manager position to be brought before the city commission. Very briefly, there were 29 or 30 candidates in total originally. The recruitment firm reviewed those and reduced that number to 13 candidates. They sent them a series or a comprehensive set of questions to provide a response to. Two candidates chose not to respond, so you had 11 candidates who returned the questionnaire, again reviewed by the recruitment firm. Decision was made from those returns to come up with a total of nine candidates to have further conversations with regarding filmed Skype interviews. That is going to proceed probably late October, early November. They intend, consistent with the contract for service, to provide those filmed responses to the city commission, and I believe we've determined that to occur on November the 13th. That will be provided, consistent with our personnel policies of having that done in executive session to, regarding the appointment of potential employees. And from those 13 interviews, presumably, the city commission will determine a final set, whatever that may be, for then the final background checks to be extensively conducted on those candidates, and for those candidates to be brought to Danville in early December for that interview with the city commission. So, it's moving along pretty much on schedule, as we talked about. Thank you. That concludes my report. There are no questions.
Yeah, I got, that's a good segue that, as per usual, you as a city staff, your staff, and us, and the commission, we have a lot of balls in the air. So, city managers, one, Parks and Rec was another, downtown master plan is coming, and I know I'm kind of beating a dead horse, I don't think, I hope it's not dead. Where are we at in the wayfinding? Anything, any updates on that?
At this point in time, I don't have an update. I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move right on into the section that I promised called "Hear the Public." This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium to address any item that is not on tonight's agenda. I first want to thank you all for coming. I hope you have found it to be informative, and I hope you'll feel free to come back more often. In order to make this as conducive to, to significant level of communication to occur, I'm going to step aside as mayor, and I'm going to ask Mayor Pro-Tim Atkins to assume the role of mayor and in the facilitation of this section.
So be it. So, what we want to do is that if you want to approach the podium and make a comment, you can't hear me? Are you going to be first?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on for a second. Mr. Hahn would be recognized as the first speaker. Please approach the mic, identify, well, they got two people fighting about who's going to be first in here. Ladies, go first then. How about that? All right? So, identify yourself, tell us your name, and then make your comment. And then, I also want to encourage folks, let's say that I say the exact same thing you think about saying. Say amen, pat your fingers, and then give your time to somebody else. Now, don't keep coming back and forth to the mic saying the same thing over and over again unless it just feel that strongly in your heart and come on and say it. But, yes, ma'am, you want to be first? Mr. Hahn getting mad at me, but it's okay.
Please make sure they say their names.
First of all, I want to say, my name is Bethel Wade. I've been here several times. The last time I was here, I made a proposal that we recognize Lonell Harris. I just found out on the 8th that it's already been done, the little sign's been put up, but I was also told by Mr. Mike that I was going to get with Ryan Scott, and we were supposed to have gotten together and do this. So, I want to know why the sign is already posted by your wife on TV, Mr. Atkins, on the little Facebook page or wherever it is. And it's already been put up, and it says, "Thank you, thank you to Bethel Wade, Doris Trumbo, and Ms. Nash. I did the walkwork. Nobody else came up here but me. Thirty years ago, I wasn't here. More than 30 years, I've been here. Nobody has come to you and asked you to do this but me. I don't know who took it on their own to go ahead and put up the sign. You want to tell me? You want to tell me?"
Ms. Wade, you have about 30 seconds left of your three minutes.
I know it. You have, you have told us three minutes. We've been sitting up here for an hour listening to you all, but we only have three minutes. Pro team mayor. And then, you came to my sister's house and said you was going to give her a piece of paper because she didn't know where I lived. That's why you hadn't got in touch with me. You knew where I lived when you put your sign for commissioner in my yard. And then, you're going to go up there with a piece of paper with her name on it. My name is not Lanier. I told you that at the last meeting, when you come telling me the sign has already been put up. I didn't ask for the state to put up nothing. I came to the city, and I still want to know who put the sign up. Tell me that, Mr. Atkins.
Can I answer?
Because you wasn't supposed to have anything to do with this. It was me and Ryan.
It's your standard policy that this is a listening session. However, if you choose to respond, you can, or you can choose to respond at a later time.
Or you can bring another letter to my sister's house.
Well, when Mrs. Wade approached us, I informed everybody in attendance that that was not a task that the city took on, that it was responsibility of fiscal court. And I said that the information should be taken to fiscal court. And so, the names on that letter that was taken to fiscal court are people in the community, including Mrs. Wade, who approached me. Fiscal court has the authority to put signs out that says, "Welcome home of whoever it might be." And so, I did that, probably about two weeks ago. And to our surprise, they decided to do it. And so, Janet Nash, Doris Trumbo, and Ms. Wade were the last three people who approached me about it, and so, that's why their names were put on the letter that was given to fiscal court. And it also says, "Other community members," because different folks in the Beta Alumni Association had asked about it as well.
Beta Alumni was here before I moved back to Kentucky.
You asked for my answer.
And Doris Trumbo and Ms. Nash tried to get it done before I moved back to Kentucky. So, where are they going to get credit for putting up the sign? Because you took it on your own to do whatever.
Mr. Hahn, are you ready to proceed to the microphone?
And Mr. Hahn ain't got nothing to do with it either. And you told me he had something to do with it too. So, come on, Mr. Hahn.
Mr. Hahn, you want to come up and make your comments?
I got the papers. I'm the one that walked the neighborhood, not Doris, not Mr. Hahn, and not Ms. Nash.
That's three minutes, Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hahn, as you come forward, Ms. Wade, if I've done something wrong in getting the task accomplished, well, if you'll listen, I'll, can I?
That's the court system, that's the city system, and it's everything else that's in Danville. I came back here, and you want to know. You want to know what happened when I moved back?
I want, what I want to say to you is that it has been accomplished, and-
And your wife, no, she didn't put nothing, nowhere, because she don't have a thing to do with this.
If you, well, I'm not going to debate that. I want, I would like, if you've been wronged, I am man enough in public to apologize to you because I had, I had, I had no intention to leave you.
I didn't have to put the thing out on the state road.
Mr. Hahn, I'm sorry.
Why are you going to put it up under Frank Walker, who's already been representing, who's already been giving his own-
Leave it alone. She's all right. Leave it alone. She's all right. She's my girlfriend. Leave it alone. She's all right.
Who's already been recognized, under Frank Walker. He should have one by himself.
Wow. Just took a turn we didn't know. Really? Oh, yeah. I might be longer than three minutes, but Wilma and Janet has gave me their three minutes. Three minutes.
That's three minutes.
Three minutes.
Our list.
I come tonight to see how bold y'all are.
All right.
I would like to see if y'all would support naming part of Fisher Row, the E.O. Richardson complex. Mr. Richardson was a very permanent citizen and businessman in Danville, and I think, and owned a lot of that property that which urban renewal took in that area. And I think you should put something up that is, to be recognized.
What area was that? Mr. Hahn, I'm sorry.
Fisher's Row, Cuthbert Square.
Got you.
Get support for that. That's what I'm at. And my second thing is, what plan do y'all have for the forestation on Fourth Street, on top of the hill, Fourth Street Hill? I think that it would be a good idea to make it some kind of homeless shelter or something in that order. Danville needs that, and I'd like for y'all to take into consideration that you make that forestation a homeless shelter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. I want to see, any other hands? You want to come to the mic and identify yourself, please?
Angela Muncie, solid waste director. We'll talk trash now, so, okay.
You did not say that.
That's what it's all about. All right. Just to let everyone know that we are having Document Destruction Day, Saturday the 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:45 a.m. So, anyone's interested in their documents, just bring it up to the recycling center. We'll take care of it. City of Danville and City of Perryville, your bulk roadside pickup will be the 21st through the 25th.
What kind of pickup?
Your bulk items, like your couches, whatever you want. So, whatever day your trash is on, that's when they'll get your bulk items. Just updated, I just done a Facebook page for social media for the recycling and solid waste to put information out there, so hopefully, it'll reach more people.
What were the dates for the bulk items again?
The 21st through the 25th.
So, that's citywide also?
Yep. That is just for Danville and Perryville, where they get the curbside pickup. Any other questions you got for me?
Somebody asked if it's in October or November. It's October?
October.
October.
Sorry about that.
That's right. Somebody back there asked it. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Next.
I'm here to speak, to voice my concerns about what's happened with Mike, with Ms. Kirchner and Ms. Joyce. I think that it's very hurtful that we have someone in leadership who continues to do these things and get by with it. The, I mean, nobody, we have, is there any repercussions for his actions? If this was somebody else doing it, say, if Mr. Atkins did this to a white female, I'm sure his job would be gone because he's a black male. That's how the black people perceive this. It's very hurtful for what you, what you said to her. If there's another side to the story, you need to tell it. Speak up, because people in the community, the black, there's not a lot of blacks here, but the ones here are hurt, and there's others that are hurt. You have city employees who I have emails from, who I've talked to, who are afraid to come and speak out against you for retaliation. I'm also wanting to start, we want to start looking into, why is there no minorities at work at City Hall? What is, what's the deal? How come we don't get opportunities? How come?
Crossguards.
You can, yeah, crossguards. You can do that, but you're putting your life in danger if you get hit by a car. I mean, what, what's it going to take? You're going to keep, what's, what's going to come out next about you, Mike? How many more women have you offended? It's hurtful. You can sit there and look at me with that little snicker on your face. I mean, that's what you, that's what I see when I see you. But I'm just telling you, it's very hurtful. I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate, Mr. Cottle was the only one that spoke up. Jennifer, what's her name? Denise Terry is a woman. You should have spoke up. That should be hurtful to you. So, we need to, we need to know what's the repercussions. He can just keep saying stuff offensive to minorities and to women, and he's going to get by with it? And y'all going to let it keep going?
Amen. Amen.
I'm just saying. It's time for you all to take a stand. He needs to go. If somebody else, if Mr. Atkins had did this, he would have been gone. He would have been gone if he had did what Mike, if he had said what Mike has said to a white woman. And that's my piece.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Alonzo L. McGuire, and my issue is that, I guess I'm a, I'm at the situation where I think we all should be. It's not a black or white issue with me. It's a wrong or right issue. That's it. So, we're going to leave the black and white out of it. That's what it is. It was wrong, nothing else but wrong, what he said to the women. Period. Whether he's white or whether he's black, or he said to a black woman or a white woman, or whoever said it. If any of us men in here, how would you feel if he said what he said to your wife, mother, or daughter? That's what you need to look at. That's what you need to look at. And as a man in his position, it is making Danville look bad. Period. So, take the color of whatever you want out of it and consider it being a right and a wrong issue. It's wrong, period. No matter how you look at it, it's wrong. And either he don't care about what he said, or he knows nothing's going to be done about it because he's in the position where he's so high up and everybody's below him. He's not worried about what he's, what he's going to say because he knew what he said. He's older, he's older than me. He knew what he said- He knew what he saying was wrong. He just didn't care about saying it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Elaine Wilson-Reddy, and full disclosure, I am married to Commissioner Cottle. According to the City of Danville Employment Policy, Part III, entitled Workplace Harassment and Discrimination, Section L 5B, harassment prohibited conduct by city policy includes, but is not limited to, innuendo, jokes, disparaging remarks. Number eight of the same section defines retaliation as conduct that would dissuade a reasonable worker from making or supporting a charge or complaint of harassment or discrimination, and it is prohibited. You can't be the new Joyce because you don't wear wigs and your skin is not as dark as hers. These are the city's cafeteria girls. She's not wearing socks. I hear so-and-so, who said I could make this quote without using her name, I hear so-and-so has her panties in a wad again. She won't get a raise as long as I'm here. These comments by Mike Paris to women, about women, some city employees, or to professionals who have a relationship with the city, all comments in a pattern of behavior that creates a toxic culture for female employees in City Hall.
Amen.
These are comments we know about. Additionally, these comments create a culture of fear with city employees who are afraid to bring action or speak out for fear of being ostracized or facing comments like the panties in a wad comment. According to an Advocate Messenger article, the city manager said that you, the commission, deemed that Mr. Paris was speaking as a private citizen and not as mayor when these comments were made. You all, by your silence, have told city employees that private citizens can speak to them in demeaning ways to make comments about their appearance or to make snide comments when they do speak out. Conversely, he did apologize from the dais during a meeting. You all went into executive session to discuss what happened to Ms. Collins. The city attorney wrote Mr. Paris's apology letter. Is he the mayor or is he a private citizen? You all, by your silence, are complicit in allowing Mike Paris, as a citizen or the mayor, to continue to joke about women at will, knowing he is free of any substantial consequence. You have let down Joyce Collins, Jennifer Kirchner, and all of the other silent employees who endure inappropriate and harassing comments by Paris, who apparently feels free to comment at will, knowing there are no repercussions.
That's three minutes.
This is shameful and greatly disappointing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amen.
Yes, ma'am.
What you think about what he said to Joyce Collins?
I personally went to Joyce and asked after that question.
I didn't ask you, I said, "What do you think about what he said to Joyce Collins?" I didn't ask you, what did you go to Joyce Collins and say?
Amen.
Oh, I, okay, well, what do I think about it?
Do you think it's wrong?
Yes, ma'am. I think it was inappropriate.
Do you think it's wrong, Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think it's wrong? Do you think it's wrong? Do you? Well, he needs to go. Simple as that. Now, I'm down to work.
Rita Bowman. What was her name?
Rita Bowman.
My name is Delphine Belinda Ralchwick-Poet. And as I mentioned at the last meeting of Concerned Citizens of Danville, I recently located here from DC. With all due respect, this is not just a female issue, and this is not just a black and white issue. There's certain things here in Danville that I think are racial issue. I go to the City Hall. I see no diversity. I've listened to the job descriptions or the non-job descriptions. I don't even know what your job diversity position is. I think that it is really important, and I think that Danville is a lovely city, but like I say, coming from DC, my husband is the one that bought this house here. It was not my choice. But this is really an important issue about how we look at racial issues and how they look to people coming up. And for me coming in and seeing no black people or seeing not an effort, and all due respect for listening, sir, all due respect for listening, we need, as a group, a combined group, to ensure that we look at issues of race as much as you issue, look at issues of parks and recreation. So thank you very much. And there are many of us who relocated here who are gonna be on the case, and we do it with a mighty right on.
Ma'am, tell us your, tell us your last name again, ma'am.
Ralchwick-Poet.
My name's Michael Mingi, and I would just like to say, as much as people say it's a color issue, I want to say it's a professionalism job and not anything to do with race or color because you can't just walk into a building and say, "Well, there are not black people in here," or "There are not Asian people in here." You can't say that. It's not, it's a professional job. You sign up for it, and you take the job.
Michael, what's your last name?
Mingi, M.I.N.G. What?
I would like to know what would be, what you'd say.
You can't walk into a building and expect to see different colors.
Yes, you can. This is a brand. When you see that.
Is there someone else desires to speak to the microphone, please?
I would like to know if you're gonna get with me and make some changes on this because this is not what your mayor had told me that you were gonna do. You didn't have anything to do with it.
Are you still talking about the sign issue?
Yeah, I'm still talking about the sign because it's not right.
I'll tell you what, we're gonna, we're gonna...
And it's not supposed to be on state streets. It's supposed to be in the city. And then you put it up under somebody you've already recognized, and then you turn around and recognize them again. And then you turned around and gave me the paper that you should have gave me a month or two ago, today.
This, this meeting will be over in about 10 or 15 minutes, and you can feel very free and welcome to confront me out in the hallway.
I confront you wherever.
Yes, ma'am, please do. And I'll be, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna be your city commissioner at all times, okay?
You're wrong.
All right. And I apologize to you. Let's go on.
I apologize and they fixing it.
Is there anyone else that desires to speak? Well, thank you for your attendance. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your suggestions. And this concludes that section of our agenda. So we will move into the financial section of our agenda, and the first item is number nine, payment of the bills.
Can we do Commissioner comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner comments?
That's all right.
I'm sorry. Commissioner comments?
Yeah. So I wanted to, these things are all serious, but on a brighter note, and we try to bring those up. We're happy that Main and Maple Streets, the repaving and restriping is done. I think everybody's been favorable on that. Streetscape's looking good. John has been overseeing that. John Castle, we appreciate you doing that, John. As far as our economic health, we've had a lot of industrial expansions announced, and a story about Luca Marino actually moving forward. So a lot of positive things happening in our communities despite the other. And just a warning, Bourbon Chase is coming this weekend.
Any comments? Mr. Comments?
No, sir.
I have, I believe it's on the 25th, Bluegrass Ed is hosting a discussion on the future of recycling, which is going to come to our feet before two months longer. I know our solid waste coordinator is going to go. If anybody wants to go, that's gonna be pretty, pretty interesting.
Can I be in Lexington?
Yes, sir.
We have a, an educational conference coming up on November the 1st. Smart Growth, help me, Jennifer. Planning a better...
Planning our tomorrow.
Planning our tomorrow. Thank you. Planning our tomorrow. It's at Center College. Lunch is provided. You need to register online prior to going. I don't have that website off the top of my head. There's a Facebook page.
We all got a...
Sorry.
That's, that's fine. There's a Facebook page. If you search for Danville Boyle County Planning Our Tomorrow under Events, it's hosted under Destination Danville Facebook page. You'll find the link to register, or you could contact me, and I'd be happy to help.
I had some commissioner comments on my brain when I arrived here, but my brain's sort of been, whatever. But I do want to thank our community for all the things that have been going on. I do want to thank fiscal court for so quickly displaying the signs about Home of Larnell Harris. It had been something that we've been working on for a little while, and it's, I've never been about the credit. I've been about the results, and I still remain about the results, okay? That's all I have. And Mr. Mayor, I want to turn the...
What do we have Wednesday? Diversity training?
That's right. 10:00 a.m.
Well, I thought, I taught three classes of sophomore, juniors, and senior students at Campbellsville University, and our topic was diversity dialogues today. So I'm well ready for Wednesday. But it's Wednesday from 10:00 to 2:00 here at City Hall. And it's the city commission and fiscal court. And it's also open to the public to attend as observers.
Let me mention, Commissioner Atkins, due to the anticipated crowd size, that was moved, and also because the fiscal court had requested it be located at the Inter County Energy, we've moved the meeting Wednesday to Inter County Energy at 10:00. And it is from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. Both the city and the county have been invited to attend another luncheon meeting to hear transportation issues at 12:30. So we'll, we'll have to end promptly at 12:00.
And it's at, it's at the RECC. Well, I have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed in that. You should have...
Inter County Energy, yes.
Yeah, you should have rescheduled it for the fiscal courtroom. Just joking.
Where is that 12:30 meeting taking place?
It's at the Country Club.
Country Club, okay.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Mayor, let's move down to item number nine, payment of the bills.
Do I hear a motion that we approve payment of the bills?
Move for approval, payment of the bills as per the bill list in the amount of $1,097,791.56.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. Who wants it?
Terry.
I did. I called it first.
Commissioner Terry. Third by Commissioner Atkins. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Item 10 is Resolution Number 2019-10-14-01. This is a safety grant application. Ms. Peak, I believe we do this every year?
We do, and this is for the liability of safety grant application that we can get some money back on some items that are used for safety, and it's, can be up to $3,000. So we'll submit bills we already have for up to $6,000, and then they'll give us hopefully $3,000 back.
Do I hear a motion that we accept Resolution 2019-10-14-01?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sears, discussion?
I might point out, just for everybody, that this money can go to a lot of different things, but law enforcement being one, parks and playgrounds, slip and fall protection, a lot of good things that are happening with this, this grant that I thought would be worth mentioning.
Any other comments? Seeing none, chair, call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 11 is the Lebanon Road wastewater project discussion. I can't believe I said Lebanon. It's Lebanon. Lebanon. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The, this subject is one that we have been working on for a few months now. It is in response to a demand for services along Lebanon Road that is intended to exploit the, and I'll give some background while HDR and Rich Smith is approaching the mic. I'll let you come on up, Rich. In response to some development along the Lebanon Road corridor, the development has requested or submitted to the city a certain demand, and the city's response to that is to investigate our sewer system and try to identify how to meet that and future demands. And HDR was employed to develop renovations to the wastewater plant, and so it was natural to allow those folks to review the hydraulics and review the details, the background for that. And we'll let Rich, I think he has prepared a technical memo to display what he's found to date, and then we'll engage in a conversation on exactly what to do.
Thanks, Earl. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Pull that up if you want. There you go.
So I believe y'all have a copy of the technical memo, so I'll just try to hit the high points of it. As Earl said, this was prompted by industrial development on Corporate Drive, which will exceed the capacity of the 10-inch sewer that runs from Lebanon Road up to Corporate Drive. So when you look at upsizing that sewer, you have to start looking downstream. It's kind of a domino effect. So we looked at the entire Clark's Run trunk sewer, which is the main sewer artery that you have in the city, follows Clark's Run all the way down to the treatment plant, goes to the Clark's Run pump station from where it's pumped into the plant. That sewer is a 36-inch line all the way up to the end of Woods Drive, where there's a lagoon, which is the site of the old treatment plant prior to 1981. And from there, it necks down to a 27. So your capacity, your sewer capacity is roughly half in the 27 as it is in the 36. And then as you go on upstream, it goes to 24 to 15 to 10, finally, all the way to Corporate Drive. So a few things I wanted to point out, there's some existing bottlenecks there. Just west of Fourth Street, there are two 15-inch sewers that come together into a single 15-inch sewer. And that's been identified as a need, an upgrade need, all the way back to 2001. There's a sewer study done back at that time. There's another bottleneck west of the Norfolk Southern Railroad, where you have a 15-inch and a 10-inch sewer that converge into a 12. And the 10-inch is the one that needs to be upgraded for Corporate Drive. So, you know, this is not a problem that's happened overnight, but the new development is kind of the impetus to address it for the city. So there's three components to the flow that we evaluated. There's the existing flow. There's the industrial flow on Corporate Drive that's already been identified as coming. And then finally, there's future development. So when you look at this watershed, you know, Clark's Run runs all the way through town, out past the bypass and beyond. The watershed out there really goes from Perryville Road all the way down along the bypass to the railroad where it crosses the bypass. So it's a pretty good-sized area. It's all your industrial area, most of it existing. There's undeveloped property along the bypass. There's undeveloped property on Corporate Drive. As engineers, we look at a 20-year planning period. So, you know, if the city's gonna make a major investment in infrastructure, we're looking 20 years ahead. So there's significant potential development. So there's significant potential development within this watershed, as well as what we know is coming. So we evaluated three alternatives at Earl's direction. So the first includes the peak flow rates from new industry on Corporate Drive. The second assumes that new industry on Corporate Drive would be able to detain some of their peak flow on-site and then release at a controlled rate. We don't really know if that's feasible for them, but we evaluated it for one reason, it shows that you still have significant need, even if they're able to do that. The third alternative would be a storage lagoon option. So rather than industry detaining flow on-site, the city is storing peak wastewater flows somewhere in the system and then releasing at a controlled rate. So the city has three such lagoons already. You have one at the wastewater plant, you have one at Spears Creek, and you have one at the end of Woods Drive. So this would be a similar type of storage, where the flow would be pumped in, stored, and then released at a controlled rate. So we've done cost estimates on all three alternatives. Our recommendation is alternative one, because we feel that's the best long-term option for the city. It will address the sewer bottlenecks that you already have, will provide for future development, and will address the immediate need. The storage alternative could save you a little bit of money in the short term, but it would not address all your long-term needs. So we do recommend alternative one as the best. The city has begun working on an EDA grant application with industrial participation, and we're assisting the city with that. We feel the city's got a very strong case for an economic development administration grant, and usually those start at a million, which could offset some of the costs of the project. So that kind of summarizes the memo, I'll be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
I'm assuming the cost estimates in the order in the book is one, two, and three, in that order?
Should be, yes.
Okay. Oh, I see it, alternative one, yeah, top left, okay.
Richard, well, this, you know, we're looking at a new sewer plant at some point, is this going to move that timeframe up, or have any bearing on that at all?
I'm not sure about that, it's probably a question for Earl. You know, it depends, there would, I think, have to be some rate analysis done, you know, depending on how many of these projects are done in the short term, to see what kind of impact it would have.
I think you would need to do some flow study. I think one of the benefits of replacing the trunk line is it would theoretically positively benefit your INI, which could affect your peak coming into the plant. Would you agree to that statement, Rich?
Yeah, it could be reduced somewhat.
And so therefore.
By tightening up the sewer system.
Yeah, we would recommend doing a, embarking on a flow study to identify that, anytime you do infrastructure, folks, and we'll reiterate this, although we've said it before, everybody thinks you fixed it. You've not fixed it, you're maintaining a system that will be here for many, many, many years after we're all gone, and has been here many years before us. And so you're trying to maintain the system, and so you're trying to get as much life as you can out of your existing infrastructure before you do things like major upgrades, and so it's in the same vein as the water plant. So probably what we would do is continue to evaluate when that date is where you have to increase capacity. Increasing capacity at the wastewater plant is not just adding some systems, like we did at the water plant, it would be rerating the plant, which would increase operating costs also, probably beyond the capital construction cost. Do you agree with that, generally?
Yeah, so the current wastewater plant upgrade that we're working on will not increase the capacity of the plant.
Right.
But it will address some of your needs that are apparent.
Correct. It will do, we're looking for reliability, but we're also positioning new equipment so that capacity could be increased in the future. Right now, you're kind of bottlenecked on the site, and things are in each other's way, and so we're trying to position the site so that when that step of capacity is necessary, then the city is in a position to do that. But I would suggest doing a more of a watershed-based overall flow study to really evaluate, because the next thing on our list in terms of distribution or collection system work would be watershed in Junction City, the Novick Watershed, there's INI there, you know, we need to figure out to what extent that could be eliminated. So there's elements of it that are complicated, so we would suggest that probably is the best approach. But the big question is, you know, I think Rich and I have talked a lot about it, and I think that initially we felt like a lagoon system would save more money than it did. So it really doesn't save necessarily half or a third, it just saves some. And so in evaluating that, that put, we felt like as staff and as the consultant in a position that we really didn't have a clear winner, and so, which is why we're posing the questions to you folks in the way that we are, we see ultimately scenario one being a little bit more on the front side of the work, on the front side of your long-term maintenance, but in the long term, it probably will eliminate a future construction project. So it's most likely that you may lose any savings you get by doing the lagoon over the course of time, plus in that situation, then your operating cost would be more, because then you would also own a lagoon and have additional construction dollars.
That's a good point. We didn't really analyze operation and maintenance costs, but with the lagoon, you have the pump station to pump in, you'll have aerators, you'll have a generator, so your operating costs will be more, considerably more than a gravity sewer line. And, you know, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but it is, it's not a situation where you can not do something, because we've already got industrial need identified that's coming, and the line needs to be upgraded, and we have to get a project that can be permitted. And one problem with the permitting agencies is they don't like bottlenecks in the system, they want you to address those, so that's why we're here.
Thank you, sir. I don't see any call for action on this subject?
Other than we would, I think staff is wanting to confirm that the correct direction for us to pursue, the consultant to pursue is alternative one. I don't necessarily know that that's a formal, other than acknowledgement, you could do probably some type of motion to acknowledge that, if that's the path you want to go down, but it definitely is not a resolution scenario.
I think if you felt strongly that you wanted staff to take action counter to what's been recommended by HDR, which is alternative one, I think is concurred with by staff, then tonight would be your opportunity to voice it. Otherwise, any non-action on your part would result in staff pursuing alternative one.
I say we go with alternative one.
Okay.
Do we need to just direct them to pursue this, or nothing?
Who's in favor of a one?
I think we all are, yeah.
All right, there you go.
Put some pursuit funding.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you hanging with us on a long night. I believe we have reason for an executive session?
Yes, sir, we do, to deal with personnel matters.
Is that it? Okay. Move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 618101F.
Do I hear a motion? We've got a second to that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, we'll move to executive session.
I move we come back out of executive session to regular session.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins is her second. Thank you, Commissioner Terry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, we are in regular session.
Kevin, say aye.
All right, here we go.
Staff would like to ask that you hire Savannah Caldwell to the position of police officer with the usual probationary measures. So moved.
Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, continue.
Staff would also like to ask that you hire Arthur Gorley to the position of mechanic with the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Motion is made.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next, we would ask that you hire Jared Blake Sexton to the position of firefighter with the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Motion is made by Commissioner Terry, second by Commissioner Atkins. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We would also ask that you hire Mona Pear into the position of building maintenance worker with the usual probationary measures.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins is her second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cardell. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And lastly, we would like to ask that you move Jessica Cheatham to the position of accounts payable payroll, finance clerk three, with the usual probationary measures.
So moved.
Motion is made by Commissioner Terry, second by Commissioner Sears. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those like sign.
That's all.
Thank you. Seeing there's no further business to come before, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, sir, is her second. Thank you, ma'am. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.